All right, let's go. I'm going to call this, uh, Green County School Board meeting to work. First thing we need to do is place all stands and we'll have Tommy come over to the pledge and Nathan will be the catcher.
I pledge allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the religion that was for living the same, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's great. Heavenly Father, Lord, thank you so much for this beautiful day that you've given us, Lord. I thank you for everyone who's here tonight. I pray that you'll just help us as we discuss some important things for the Green County school system and help us just to make the best of it that we can, Lord. And I pray that you'll just be with my kids and students and stuff who's there preparing to come back to school, Lord, and be with our community and our world and this our nation, Lord. Help us to, you know, know how to fight this coronavirus more and just, you know, put this thing to an end and, Lord, if it happened and you could take it away. And I just pray that you'll just give the doctors and everyone, the nurses and everybody on the front line to give them wisdom. You're having protection upon them, Lord, and just help them to the treatments and different things that they develop. I pray that they will continue to work and, you know, even though cases are on the rise, death rates still staying so far good, and I pray that you'll just help that and just help them to be able to treat this thing, Lord. Give us our sins, oh, we felt it in verse 2. Thank you.
Amen. Okay, first off, we do have a little echo coming over here. Maybe feedback, maybe we can push this away a little bit, maybe just my voice. First thing I need to do is read a statement under the continuing provisions of the state executive order to protect the safety and welfare of the public. The Green County School Board Education meeting on Monday, July 13th, 2020 at 7:30 p.m. will be closed to the public in order to maintain transparency. The meeting will be live streamed and a recording will be provided as requested.
My head is a little too hot, it's a little too much on all of it.
First thing up in our new business is approve in category adjustment federal fund 142 CARES Act, that's a grant. Do I have a motion?
A like.
On that. Tommy. Second by Nathan. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like a sign. Item B, approve fund 177 capital budget resolution adjustments. Do I have a motion?
Some move.
Second. Nathan and Tommy. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like a sign. Approve fund 141 general school fund budget resolution. Uh, have a motion?
I'll make that.
Michelle, I have a second. Second taken by Tommy. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like a sign. All right, if you all will listen to me, give me a little, bring me a little leeway. Item D, I'm going to put it at the bottom of the agenda. Um, I believe there'll be a lot of questions regarding this, but item D will go last. So we're going to item E. Approve Green County schools as critical infrastructure using CDC infrastructure guidelines. Do I have a motion?
A like.
And Tommy and Brian, any discussion? Question? All right, all in favor say aye. All opposed, like a sign. Okay, approve IDA partnership systematic change preschool sustainability grant for 2020-2021. Do I have a move? Thank you. Say my Brian and Tommy, you're right, I'm stuttering, sorry. All in favor say aye. All opposed, like a sign. Approve IDA partnership systematic change K through 12 exploration grant for 2020-21. Do I have a motion?
Some move.
Second. Motion by many. Second by Clark. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like a sign. Approve IDA innovation grant for 2020-2021. Do I have a motion? Some move. Nathan, second by Michelle. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like a sign. Okay. Next up, we'll go ahead and give a motion in a second, then we'll discuss the plan or do you, or if they were going to go ahead and have a discussion, then do the motion. I know you had some things you want to show us, I got Miss Ronde that I'm going to let, I got Miss English in the back.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, if everybody, if everybody be all right with that, I'm going to do that first.
Even, even after some amendments made to it, Rick, that I have, that we need to do that first, or we need to go.
Well, if you got the amendments, we need to do that first.
There's two pieces to it there. Uh, the first one is, if you'll make a note.
If you don't mind, make sure you speak into the.
Yeah, uh, if you will look on page 11, appendix A, the second bullet point, and page 13, appendix C, uh, we did change, uh, most of them, majority of our policies in Green County schools reference 100 degrees, the temperature of a child is close to 100.4. So within this document, it was lowered from 100.4 to 100 based on the recommendation from Kim Phillips, which is our system R and just to align with other things. Um, that's, that's one point of amendment. The other thing is, uh, I know there was lots of discussion and questions about community spread and school operating scenario section. Uh, I know we did send that out to you guys in an email. The one we're wanting to change that to is actually identical to, to the city's plan. We released our plan to kind of give, uh, some idea to parents a couple of weeks ago, then the city came out with theirs. We, since we joined the vocational program down there at GTC, as well as in the same community and dealing with the same health department, we wanted to align, uh, the green, the yellow, the yellow, the red, the same as, as Green County City. Uh, I will say this, I want to make sure this point comes across, uh, Rebecca, you, I asked for a little help here and Kathy, and they may have some questions for you guys. And I know Dr. Kurski, we listen to his updates quite often. If you look and, and if you don't have a copy, I can hand a copy out to you if you don't have.
You're talking about this in your email.
Yes, sir.
So what page would that be on in the regular document? Seven?
Seven.
All right.
Uh, anybody else need to, I think, yeah. Um, if you look at this revised plan or the amendment I'm asking for in this document, if you look at the green to yellow, it's defined as an average rate of zero to 6.99 new COVID-19 cases per 100,000 Green County residents in the last 14 days for three consecutive days in case cluster evaluation. Um, Jason, if I could get you to go to the epicure with the Department of Health, this, this here is the number that we're referring to, uh, and it's actually in this amendment here where it says click here. Um, if you go to the Department of Health, it's the email I sent you, the epicure, Jason.
This is this page. It's on.
Tennessee Department of Health.
How many people do we have in Green County? We don't have 100,000, do we?
No, we say pro rata, Clark. I just want to show you what it would look like, uh, if you go to Green County, right there, Jason, uh, there's Green County, scroll all the way down to the left bottom corner. Currently we're 7.85, but here's what I'm recommending, and I want this to be clear to the board. Based on that number, it says right now we're in yellow because they're using the yellow to 7.85. In speaking to that, to Dr. Kurski, uh, from the Health Department, basically they're not supporting a numeric number, okay? That's why you look at case cluster evaluation and you can see the yellow says 7, 10.99. And Rebecca, I may let you comment on why you give that recommendation.
And for, and just so we're all clear, Rebecca, I ain't busy, but when you do speak, I'll have to have you come to the podium so we can, if you don't mind, you come on up to this, it sounds like you're going to be asking questions. And also, and I've got my, I've got this mat too, which is hard to be heard if you, while you're up there, if you don't mind, you may need to pull it down a little bit so we can understand. Thank you. All right, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I thought we'd get it all set up.
So when you look at the epicure with the Tennessee Department of Health, you want to look at that, um, that 5.43 number, that average number of new COVID-19 cases in the last 14 days. Um, the reason that you look at that number is that, is that's how we tell over just a period of time, over two weeks, kind of what's going on in the community where we've got spread and the number of cases. Um, the way this is written, and I'm going to be real honest with you right now, Tennessee Department of Health and the Tennessee Department of Education, we want kids in school, right? We want kids in school to open, we want kids to stay in school, and we want schools to be open for our children. Um, the one thing with masks, um, masks reduce 80% of new COVID-19 cases. That's a large number. If everybody would wear their mask, it would make our job a whole lot easier. The one thing with these metrics is we, we really are discouraging school systems to look at just a black and white measure, but as far as speaking and talking with the school superintendent and school administration, we have to have metrics. So you have to have something to go by. We have to let you know that there's cases going on in your county. Um, but as far as looking at it black and white, you do have some wiggle room. You've got wiggle room to talk about as far as, um, with your school system and what's going on. For, can I just give you an example?
Oh, I'll do it, please, too.
So over the years, we closed a whole school district because of inclement weather, right? It makes snow a whole lot more towards South Spring, but it may not have snowed as much toward Baylston, but to make it all, make it easier and for safety reasons, we, we closed the whole school district. Um, as far as flu, you look at a lot of your absenteeism rates, you look at that, how many teachers you've got to be able to teach and those kinds of things, you look at that on a daily basis. With COVID-19, it's just a little bit more tricky. It's, it is, it's tricky. Um, you have to look when we go through those positive cases, we go through an investigation, it's a very detailed investigation. And in your plan, you all have done a great job. I just want, I just want to say to this board, I want to say to our school officials and our leaders and our school department, they have done a tremendous job over a difficult subject. It's been difficult. It's been difficult for the Tennessee Department of Health and as far as public health experts. But as far as the plan, it's a great plan. It's a wonderful plan. Um, the one thing for us to have discussions about cases and we want kids to be able to stay in school is, for example, in a third grade class, and I'm just making up a name here, Ms. Smith, in a third grade class, she may have a pupil that is a, a positive case for COVID-19. So you're going to look at those children standing around that one child and who that child was within six feet of distance for more than 10 minutes. Now you might say, you might look at a cluster, say maybe two or three children in that one class may have COVID-19. You may have to suspend that class, that one class for 14 days, not necessarily having to shut down a whole school. Do you see, do you see what I'm saying? And it's going to be a very close relationship that we have with Mr. McLean and all of his leadership and Kathy Augfer, our Health Department Director, on how we do that investigation and those contacts and what that recommendation would be, and it would be a joint effort. We, we cannot tell you, you need to close, um, North Spring High School. We can't tell you to do that, but we can give you the metrics, we can tell you what it's looking like, we can tell you about the clustering, and then we, then you make that decision. Does that make?
I have a question.
Okay.
You say 14 days.
An average of 14, in an average of 14 days?
And as you go from day one of that 14, it's considerably lower than it is today.
Right.
It's going up each day in the middle. That number's going to rise in the next seven days. It's not going to be five, four, three, it's probably going to be six. That's the rate we're going, am I not correct?
It will, it's the rate, depending on the number of cases.
Has it not?
Positive case, and it has, has gradually gone up.
Gradually, we had five or six cases over the weekend.
Right.
We've had as many as double figures two, three days ago.
Right.
So it's going up each day.
Yeah.
That's, that's my concern. It's not getting less.
But you take an average.
Well, it's the average of the last days and, and seven days forward.
Right.
It's going to be considerably different than that.
It will.
Because even four or five cases on the front end is, and sometimes zero. So that's going to bring that average down on its old information.
But we're looking at the most recent as far as two week period.
Yeah, that is, that is what goes out for the next six or seven days, that number's going to go up. It trends like it is now.
It will, it will increase, but I want you to know, I want you to know the rate's going to continue to evolve.
Rebecca, would you recommend to myself and this board, I know we've got the number on the left of 7.85 is what I've seen our city using, a lot of other districts using, but I know you keep rendering back to the other column. Would you recommend we amend this and use the 5.43, uh, in, as, as a metric of some sort? Or we stay with the far left one, in your personal opinion?
Um, the average rate, that's going to go into your 100,000 population, which is, it's calculated and, and we all know you don't have 100,000 people in Green County. So it's, it's already in that cost calculation. Um, the one on your left is the average rate of new, so that's your average, um, over the last 14, or over the last 14 days based on 100,000. The 5.43 is the average number of new COVID-19 cases in the last 14 days based on the county. So it's, it's up to this board what you want to use, um, you can do whatever.
But that number is going to continue to rise. Did I not ask that question?
You did.
And what was that?
And I said it will base on the number of cases, new cases.
I bet y'all.
Did you say it fluctuates up and down?
It will fluctuate.
But it has been fluctuating up in the last four or five days.
It has, but it can also, but it can fall down.
Absolutely. Well, what about, what about relates to, and similar to cases and everything we've been seeing here in Green County too? And I guess it's a whole cross to, Nathan, you asked, what about kids? How do they think it'll be faring in this stuff? Uh, that's another important question. Are they, they're not settled to it like we've heard, they are, or what are you asking?
You know, kids are faring very well. It's when you get into your, um, older population that we see folks not faring well. And the reason for that too, as far as your older population, they have comorbidities, they have chronic diseases, and so the older you get, the more increase you're going to get those comorbidities.
But isn't the average going down, the, that across the nation too? We're somewhere around 37, 35, and now the average is the biggest beginning this. I don't know how many are dying. I have a nephew that passed away last night, he's 45. So I'm, I'm concerned about whether we put, those people, saying, oh, there are teachers at risk, they're, and they grew to torment, and they will be more susceptible to this. And we have 20 teachers out because they get virus, where are we going to get replacements for them? I know, I know we've got a substitute plan, but they, they're not going to have people either.
Clark, that is a concern. I mean, you heard Rebecca say, if we have that cluster, I think that's what we're looking at as a district. It's not so if you have an outbreak in McDonald's that we close the whole district. We're, we're going to take this relationship with the Health Department to look at a school, look at a classroom, I mean, they've given examples of football players. If you have two football players that breaks out on the football team, then you, then you run, uh, contact tracing in reference to what classes they've been in. And, and I think that's where we look at it, just like she said earlier, it's so much different than weather related. In this situation, we do want to have a virtual plan in place, um, hopefully we have that out next week. And, and I will say this, uh, this is uncharted territory. If you do have 15, 20 teachers in a school, that is, that is going to be a challenge.
I, I, I play system Y, but we have teachers now that all waited to test the positive. Some of them are married to employees that are, that are employees of our bus drivers now.
We have teachers that have tested positive.
Yes, ma'am, sir.
Sir.
And we've, uh, we have the county to have 17 or 18 teachers resign this past week according to news, and more bus drivers than that same county.
You mean in Green County or?
No, in Sullivan.
Okay.
I can confirm that, it's totally on the news this weekend, and I, and you heard that?
I know, I know.
I just, I just want to make we're all clear on this plan, that if we do jump above 6.99 in the green, based on the case cluster evaluation, that does not automatically mean we jump to the yellow, nor does it mean in this plan, if we go above 10.99, that if we automatically go to the red, where we, uh, I guess, close school system. So I just, I just want to make sure that that is clear based on this plan.
I'm concerned with the safety of everyone in this whole system, not just the views that have it now. I, I contend when we put all these people together, it's going to go up amongst a factory and a building. If George, David, and David and Bill are in the same building, one of us get, most likely, we're all going to be exposed to it. I hope you know.
You know, there's exposure everywhere.
Oh, I know. I heard it, I heard it, so is mine, right here.
I, I want you to understand that there's community spread in Green County. It's not just folks going on vacation and bringing it back to Green County, there's community spread already in Green County.
And I know, I know, because they're on the increase every day.
Yeah, Clark, we got that. I mean, the number's wrong, you're right, so we got that part. And I understand what you're saying too, I'm sorry to hear about your name, but our main goal here in the Green County school system is to educate those kids.
I understand.
And, and Clark, and what we're going to have to do is just go, just like Rebecca said, we've got a good plan in place, we're going to have to follow the plan, Clark. If we get an outbreak in the school, then we're going to have to address it. We either shut it down or whatever the case may be. We might be back here in October.
But we have to start August 7th, we can start August 28th. And that the other system, we don't, we'll see a pattern if it's good or if it's bad. If it's bad, we're in that bad with them. We're exposed and our people, who, who, wait for it, I don't know that we're ready. They all ready, our training, we want that ready.
We'll be ready.
We're ready.
We'll be ready.
We'll be proficient, ready.
Well, the date is 13th of July, we'll be ready by the time we're supposed to start.
How many, George, how many janitors do you need to hire?
Well, if you're going to hire one at each school, that supplemental janitor, we're, we're going to put that out tomorrow if the board proves this plan to mind.
How many you think you'll be able to get, to get trained?
I don't know.
All right. Well, one good thing about this, we got some money to hire, hire that kid.
Well, I, I agree with that. I just need the extra, I just want to know that we can.
We're trying to get away from Miss Rebecca here. Do we have any more questions to Miss Rebecca? She, so she won't, hey, or you finish with Miss Rebecca?
Yeah, I just want to say thanks for, for her taking her and Kathy as well for coming.
I'm going to ask you.
Uh, this is a hard situation for all of us. I know we have to work jointly with the Health Department.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I just want to make sure that, you know, the advice I'm getting from the Department of Health as well as the Department of Education is clear, and certainly the case clusters will be evaluated along with the Health Department. And once again, I want to clarify, because it just says zero to 6.99, just because we go above 6.99 does not mean you go to the yellow or yellow to the red. And I know, I'm sorry for repeating that, I've said it several times, but there, there is a point in there for case cluster evaluation to look at each specific event that would be worked out with Kathy, Dr. Kurski, as well as Rebecca, uh, where we are in this plan.
I think we got to have that leeway because, uh, someone this week that put it about as specifically as I think you might can, we're trying to fly an airplane where we build it. And we've got to have a leeway in our plan to, um, you put a hard, fast number down there, you don't know, put a long, hard and fast number, and you can't just.
Need your reaction, close everything down.
I, I am not saying close everything down. I'm saying start a little later when we're a little more prepared and we see what the trend is, you know?
We'll be prepared.
It got, it's, it's fair to Miss, Miss English here. Any, any got the last, okay, go ahead.
Being that our population is not 100,000, what would be the appropriate number?
They already, for 5.43.
Yes, they already. That's the number that we're going to go on, the 5.43?
Well, that's what I was asking, actually, the 100,000 in the far left block is prorated based on 70,000 people, okay? So that is prorated, so that is our number, the 7.85. So I guess, you know.
I thought most they didn't.
That is, yes. So the 5.43, that's what I was asking her, do we amend our plan to utilize the 5.43 in our district, or do we just keep it where it's prorated with the 100,000?
Kathy, do you match our population?
I think you can go with either one. If you'll, can you travel up to the top for me just a little bit, just to see? Green County is below the threshold.
So. Can I, can I, I'm sorry Rebecca, but can you go to Sevier County and just show what it looks like?
Take a second.
There it is.
Sevier County's still open enough, right?
Yes. Well, I'm saying so is Hamlin County. Hamlin's above the threshold as well.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think this by looking, I mean, that's a good measure, but I think the relationship that we have with you all and the plan that we have, and just, you know, if we have cases safe at Bell's or whatever in the third grade class, I mean, to me, it would make sense, you know, you all come and get lost, see what's going on doing your stuff. We go back in there if we have to, you know, even, and we've got to make our money thanks to the federal government there to kind of handle this stuff with. But even if we have to have a, a special cleaning crew on standby, we can get a, you know, a moment's notice to come in and clean that whole school, you know, and then the kids can come, those kids can't, so the rest of the school can still, they'll back to school if they want to the next day, or, or two, whatever takes, you know, two or three days, whatever is reasonable to get everything cleaned up and go back, or whatever y'all reckon.
I mean, you could even do that in the evening time, and that way you don't have to, you don't really have to disrupt it with the other classes.
Yeah, let me stop this to the state. Yeah, let me tell this to the state is requiring us to have a continuous learning bond. So if you shut down a school, it's got to be specified what you do in that plan, at that school. Our plan is due July the twenty-fourth. It has to be soon. And we've had a pretty good head start because we've been talking virtual for the last couple, several weeks. And, but that's, I just want to share that it's due July twenty-fourth.
I think, listen to everybody, I thought, I think Rebecca will probably agree with me that this plan just got to be flexible. We're going to have to go one way or the other. It's going to be a living document. It could go up a lot and go down a lot. I mean, it's...
About first year, but?
Yeah, yeah. So I mean, I mean, we've got to do what we can to feel like is the best starting plan. And I always tell somebody, we can vote on this plan tonight and may have changed it Thursday.
Now, because the count continues to go up. We're about those numbers for the change in the county.
Absolutely, or it could go down.
Rebecca, one thing I'd like for you to share is what if you have a cluster? Now, let's use Durham Hensley Nursing Home. May it forbid that it happens. It's in the Chucky area. How does, if you had sixty individuals in Durham Hensley come down, how does it affect that chart?
Um, if those would be counted as positive cases, and so that's going to affect your cases in Green County.
Would you say then that's where you would identify and look at the case cluster even though that's going to really skew your data?
Yes, because we felt this already in other counties as far as certain populations where we had a huge jump after testing a certain population. And so we explained from the Tennessee Department of Health, because the media are going to want to know why, if you have a big jump today in a certain county. And so we've answered those things. This is why we're having a huge jump. So it will affect that. And then that's where we communicate with the school district. We communicate with the local media. This is why you're having a increased amount of cases today on the Tennessee Department of Health website. So, yes, we will be in communication about that.
Some counties, I know Trail was there for one, had a huge outbreak in their jail now, correct?
Right, right. And so it could happen to Green County as well.
So it would show the numbers were way up, but it was really just that one cluster?
It was just that one cluster. And that's when we go in and test those vulnerable populations, like your jails, like your nursing homes, like maybe a migrant farm, for instance. When we see a cluster, we want to go in there and mitigate and test and do all of our investigation with that so it doesn't spread more into the community.
Can we set a number instead of coming back two days or three days from now? If it gets to that number, we automatically go to that next level instead of coming back to where they...
Well, I don't think, I think, to answer your question, I guess, but I think what we're doing here is when we vote for this plan, we're telling David in his, in the central office that we get this name, it's up to you guys. They'll monitor it. I don't think the board will have to come back to you later and say, yeah, I don't.
And in your plan...
Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, I think we might have to come back to you later.
Well, I'm sorry, I meant...
In your...
I meant Mr. McLean and his staff may have to...
Well, that's it.
Yeah, sorry.
In your plan, when you, in that red column with substantial spread, you've got the word consideration. That consideration is a good word. That's what David's talking about is he's going to be in collaboration with us and in communication with us about those figures in those ranks. So that's a good word.
Does it count for safety? Are we going to, our desire to restart schools from having a fella? Or are we going to let that be total, an influence that makes us go and we put people out there on the way? That's my question. I, one person that's too many that dies from this, and I'm not referring to my nephew, he's not a senior. We have people who are severe divestments or believers of our students. That principal, he gets the devil's tooth against him in politics. And he's out of commission. We don't have a principal in that school.
Well, be the devil's advocate here. So is that person we're talking about still going to Walmart and Lowe's?
I don't know.
Well, that is...
I mean, you don't know, you don't know what people's doing. And here's the thing, Clark, I mean, and I fully understand what you're talking about, about...
Yeah.
And, you know, if I was in that high-risk category and I was the principal of a school or a teacher or whatever, then, you know, I would probably be talking to Mr. McLean and saying, look, you know, I mean, I really want to go back to school, but, you know, I really can't. I'm not going to put my, you know, and so if it's like a going to church, anything else, you know? I mean, we're going to church, you know, and our church and we've got things up trying social distance, leave what we want to.
Well, we work over at the church. We've got thirty-two people there staying home for the weekend now because of the Russian march.
Right, well, I understand that, meaning, you know, but our church wants to go to church, you know? So we're just, we're going to leave it up to their rest, you know? And we try, you know, clean church and Santa Claus and that's all we can do in this situation too. Just do the best we can do. And that's it.
Are you better?
I think what Clark's trying to say is we children don't have a choice. The teachers don't have a choice. We're sitting here making a decision in regards to their health and what, you know, what could conceivably occur. And yet, these kids need to go back to school. We need to be in school. But we got to get these numbers right to where if we've got an issue with that kid in the third grade that's violated, exposed, that you're going to come in there like you do in the nursing home and you're going to make sure that the rest of that building's not troubled.
Well, me, I guess I disagree a little bit. The kids do have a choice because we give them a choice to break the mortar or...
Oh, yeah, that's true.
I mean, they did have a choice. And I started the conversation again. Any more questions for Rebecca? Sorry to make you stand in the firing line.
You're pretty there though.
Any more questions for Ms. Rebecca? Yes, tell me the second, the comments got them.
Ms. English? That's right.
Yes.
Rebecca English. Do you like this plan?
I like this plan.
Would you feel safe sending your child?
I have, I have two children in the Green County school system right now. Both of them will be at North Green High School. They've actually been at North Green High School already conditioning for sports. I have sent them for four weeks now, except death period. As a mom and as a public health professional, this is what I tell my children. You go in, they're only using a ball that they're supposed to be using that on ball just for them, they're not sharing. And they have hand sanitizer with them. They have hand sanitizer before they get back in the car. And as soon as we get home, they wash their hands. And that's another thing I do with like today for children. That is something I don't think children do as well as we need for them to do. I think that should be educated for our children in the end school system. That it's not just a little quick rub, it is a twenty-second rub of water and soap.
Do you think that kids in kindergarten through first, second grade are apt to follow the rules or complete swap back? How about your mask? I don't want to wear a shirt.
I think in your plan, in your plan, Clark, I think your leaders and your leaders with your school system have put it in the plan about hand sanitizer. I think after they wash their hands, you use hand sanitizer. You've got this in your plan. And I think it's, I think as teachers, they're going to, they're going to, they're going to help their students to understand why it's important for them to wash their hands. Now, can they be there with them every second? They cannot be there with them every second. But they're going to educate their children in the classroom about washing their hands and how important that is.
I felt it's that age, and I can tell you, you can train, but you cannot assure that's going to happen. They have a mind of their own.
You can't...
And you can't sure that's the law, I know.
But as far as going back to your question, Mr. Paul, I feel very comfortable sending my children to school. Have we practiced social distancing? Of course we have as a family. I am the one that goes to the grocery store once a week. I have to go to work every day. My husband has to go to work every day. But we practice social distancing. We're trying to be smart. When we go to church, we sit in the car or we sit outside or we wear our masks. We're being smart. And this is a time where you have to be flexible. I feel, you know, from the Department of Health standpoint, we want our children for their mental stability, for their social stability. It's been hard on our children not being...
I don't disagree on this thing. I think, I don't think we, I think we've progressed in education since March. I think we went backwards in the learning of business for children. There's no doubt about that. But if we have an outbreak of either Jews or adults in our system, we made mistakes.
Well, Clark, I'm not concerned for the adults. I mean, I really am. That, I mean, kids, I'm not too concerned.
I think it's children are resilient. But I do think that we've got one thousand employees out there that we're putting at risk.
But I also say, Clark, as an adult, I'm a teacher, you know? And that's the way my wife is. She said, I don't want to take school if I haven't to wear a mask all the time or if I have to do it personally. She don't want to do it. She knows the risk, but she's ready to go back to school. So if we've got teachers that don't want to do it, Clark, then you make those adjustments.
And they, the majority of the people, they don't have the choice and that's what they've got to have them. If you don't, if you can't go back to school, you don't have anything.
Thank you, Rebecca. It's just like Mr. McLean said. People were, I've known territory. We're welcome to work. Well, that's where I wish this decision wasn't have to be made by anyone. But it's going to have to be. I mean, that's recent.
It is.
For our community. And it's going to be our conscience and our, you know, we're going to have to do what we think's right. Not what Michelle thinks right or what Nathan thinks right. It's what the individual thinks. And that's where I stand. And it's, I'm the one that has to pull up sheets night and go to sleep. I don't want to be able to go to sleep.
Okay.
And not, and Rick?
Yes.
Please don't interrupt me when I'm talking. But you called, so I was going to say if David had any other thing.
She told him.
I'm sorry.
Oh, she told him.
You did, I'm sorry, Mr. Paul.
No, the only thing I may share is jumping the gun.
Or you don't have to right now for going. I was going to recognize Brona and let her come in. Brona, thank you for being part of that committee. I know that you and Brona and Chapman was part of the committee.
I wish you'd have started them down here, Ron. Now I've got to touch your phone and say, everyone, look at them.
And he's going to do it one-on-two.
Yeah, he might do it to them at one.
I'm going to start, um...
Don't make it, Brona, you're soon, I'm there.
Hey, good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I am Ron Langford, and I am DCA president for Green County Education Administration. So based on concerns that we've shared by several Green County teachers, the major issues are cleaning, social distancing, COVID diagnosis and exposures, masks and VPE, community resources and online learning. Each board member should have received an email with a detailed list of the concerns. Should you not have received one, you're getting one now that's been passed along. There's also some additional concerns on that paper. Teachers are concerned with plan that was posted on Green County Commonwealth page. The plan was psyched, it was dated June twenty-sixth. And on that day, which was sixteen days ago, Green County had sixty-eight positive cases. And this was then a two percent positivity rate. And Sunday, Green County, there was at a hundred fifty-one. We have now more than doubled those numbers in only sixteen days. And it is actually a hundred twenty-two percent increase. And the positivity rate is almost three point two percent, which is sixty-seven percent increase. Now, the extension to when and how to open the schools, yes?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt. But what did you say the active cases were right now in Green County?
One fifty-one, am I wrong?
You're wrong, there's sixty-four. I just got it from the department, from Heather Sop today. There's sixty-four active, one hundred fifty-seven total cases. Sixty-four active, two deaths, and ninety-one recovered.
Now, my information I did get from the Tennessee Department of Health website. And it was, I'm just...
That's what you were telling, was that telling people who have contacted the virus that people were active, they're active, what they were?
Yeah, Heather reported demand three fifteen or sixty-four. They had seven more cases since Saturday.
Okay. So I know the decision as to when and how to open schools is a difficult one. The plan that the media that was passed, bringing a plan to this very board began to work in early June. When we had just come out of quarantine, the COVID nineteen case count in the areas were low, were extremely low. Now, what has happened since, however, should give this governing body and every state code in our community pause. Green County and its surrounding areas have seen an exponential increase in the number of cases. It was just last Friday that there were, please, I'm sure you will correct me if I'm mistaken, that there were fifteen new cases in one day in our county alone for a total of fifty-seven active cases. Washington County, they saw a twenty-six case increase in one day. And Hamlin County, they saw a twenty-six percent increase. Now, everywhere we turn in northeast Tennessee, we don't have this virus under control. And yet, we're willing to send students and teachers and support staff back into buildings in close quarters without the ability to effectively social distance that the CDC has been telling us for months. Without masks, which the CDC and credo epidemiologists and biologists have said will slow the spread. In a matter of weeks, our schools could become a hotspot. I know you've already voted on the critical, the critical infrastructure. I've never heard of that term not used in the educational setting. So upon researching that, research told me that, and let me know if this is the case, that adopting that designation, it will change the guidance of the school system employees that who have been normally exposed to co-op or student infected, allowing for potentially infected teachers to remain on the job after an exposure event as long as he or she were asymptomatic, is it?
Yeah, this was at the advice of our attorney, yes. So you are correct.
I am correct, you say that. So this designation, it's usually used in manufacturers and in plants where adults are in contact with other adults. It's not student and teacher interaction. So how does this change, how does that benefit the students?
I can answer that. I think what that does, for instance, that allows and tries to keep teachers within the classroom. You know, certainly, we want teachers, students safe. But I think within these guidelines, we set those guidelines. For instance, if my wife comes down with it, then there's a decent chance, just like Ms. English said, I've been with her within six feet of her for ten minutes, I'm more than likely going to be quarantined. But just because my wife has it, doesn't mean that everyone in this building becomes quarantined. So that's how I understand a critical infrastructure. And personally, based on the guidance of our attorneys, you know, you constantly could have a domino effect. Just like Ms. English said, everybody's going to end up knowing somebody that's had it. So what we're trying to do is have school, have teachers in front of our kids. And then within those guidelines, and I don't have that paper in front of me. I know it was an attachment that certainly if it's someone such as that that's come in contact, then there are certain guidelines they have to follow. One of those is wearing a mask, certainly being isolated, those kind of things, and practicing social distancing. And Ms. Langford, to help you too in this and... And Ms. Langford, they help you too in this and getting to the masks. I did just get a, I don't know if the radio just got an email or text or not, but our mayor is, is requiring masks starting, uh, July the 15th, that okay?
Well, if they're in Green County mayor, it's mandated.
Yes, it's mandated masks starting.
Okay, well, that answers one question.
Is that in student enrollment in schools?
Well, I would think that's certainly something to discuss. It's kind of hard, I think, for us to, to, it kind of goes to required based on the recommendation from our.
Like all the rest of Sullivan County did that too, but they excluded churches and schools and stuff that was included in, you know.
Was it included or was not?
Yeah, Sullivan County was not included in that, you know, like, except churches. They always leave this way, this way out. I mean, because certain people have claustrophobia, claustrophobiousness, I don't, you know, they play that, you know, that way. But, you know, there's always an house, you know.
Bill, didn't you say kids under 12 were excluded?
Yeah.
And why couldn't it?
May I ask, if state emergency doesn't apply to schools, will the mask mandate apply to schools?
It is excluded in schools, probably.
Well, we don't know.
We don't know yet, but it's also maybe excluded schools from doing the mandate.
That's right. Some kind of school churches and.
Yeah, we don't know for sure in County yet, Rob, we're.
But they're mainly just, they're, they're doing that, I mean, Kevin falls asleep too along with, you know, if you're going into Walmart or going to Lowe's, you've got on masks, you know, I fully agree with that way it was, you know, about everyone. So maybe they should do more, but they're not.
So we can let our dog talk to me right now. Look, look, another issue is federal funding and I did pass out some papers to you. Basically, I just want to say that regarding federal funding, there is nothing, nothing, nothing that President Trump can do outside of congressional approval. Also.
The whole, the whole.
Yes.
You can do without approval from Congress.
Right. And to you, my board, um, I guess just a reminder that you can tow the school, not as governor. And, you know, and all of my teachers, my, all of my leaders in advocating for teachers or advocating for anybody, I have never, ever had to answer some of the questions I've recently been asked. Teachers have been asked to me about how does your priority in the world? They have asked, how do I prioritize followers in the event that I may catch something at school? How do you answer those questions? I don't know. Like all teachers, I do want to be here with my students. I haven't had a single teacher yet or taught a single teacher that I represent who said that they don't want to be in school, because they do, they really do. But they want to do it safely. We miss our students. We care for them more than what you could even imagine or what you know. And that is why we express some concerns over the reopening plan. When the reopening plan was created and posted on Green County website, there was no threshold for each of the three levels, green, yellow and red. Teachers and parents have no idea when we will move from one stage to another because it wasn't defined in, in the plan. Green County's plan also has no plan for a status schedule. The entire plan is centered around brick and mortar, attendance until shutdown is necessary. But yet some of our neighboring districts, they have plans for blended auctions such as students attend a two-day with Witty Clubhouse or fewer students in the building at one time and maintain the social distancing guidelines. Teachers usually, they will purchase some of their own cleaning supplies and things like Swat supplies, hand sanitizer, which are on the back to school shopping list, but these items are virtually impossible to find. If they can't be found, then they become very expensive or throw away that maintain the inventory for the level of cleaning that must be conducted in the time it's cost prohibitive to teachers. Who is going to pay for individual cleaning supplies for these teachers' classrooms? School supplies also cost materials that are often shared by the entire class. If students cannot share material, how will classrooms have enough supplies for every student? And who will pay for that? By deadline of June 26th, parents were asked to sign their student set up for online instruction if they were going to send them back to school and if they were not going to send them back to school in person. They had to do that not knowing what online instruction would look like and without knowing the school district reopening plan. But schools are set to open in less than three weeks and parents, teachers, they still do not know what online instructions are going to look like. Will our teachers have to teach each class twice a day, once to brick and mortar students and once online? If that's the case, that would be devastating workday in an already stressful environment? Or will they be given recording equipment to record their brick and mortar lessons for online up a little later? Or will these services be out of service to online company or platforms? These are answers that have yet to be addressed in many cases. Now, nobody wrongs normal more than teachers and students, but safety should be our number one priority in this case. Teachers aren't allowed to keep doors and windows open because we have been called that after countless school shooting tragedies across the country, that locked doors protect students and teachers against active shooters. We are facing national health crisis, which is reaching ethical proportions here in our state and surrounding areas. We can learn from those that have come before us. I ask you humbly to please, please consider the safety of teachers, support staff and students in making your decisions. We all know students need instruction, but what avenue and what cost? We must consider safety first.
I asked this question.
Yeah, I was looking for questions for.
I don't have a question for. I asked earlier just.
Let me ask the panel man, please. Any questions for Rob?
And can, I'm sorry, can I add? I, I know that before when we were taught, when we were speaking, we said how safe we thought in this plan. Some of us do feel very taken in this plan, but a lot of your teachers do not. They feel though the plan is very, very loose and there's a lot of wiggle room and variables in there. Also, they have families too that they have to go home to after coming to work teaching. And sometimes they don't want to come to work and teach, they do. But they also got their safety to look after, they've got their children's safety, or maybe it's loved ones that they may take care of as well.
Well, we can agree the whole, the whole community is in that though.
I agree, yes, yes.
And I totally agree with everything you, you're saying about me. We just got to be honest about it. The whole community, I mean, Rebecca said the same while it goes, we all have to go to work and we all have to come back. So, um, we're trying to, we're trying to do our best to make sure safety is in our and this kind of adds to, you said there's not numbers, whether or not there's numbers. We've got numbers. I had a very nice conversation with a teacher from Dope and her concern was face masks. I'd rather have one of those shields, face shields, not masks, shield.
Rick, I don't mean to interrupt, but I've got some things here tonight to show.
Okay, but I just want to show you what communication we've had and some of the we've done to the best to eliminate. It, it's hard to answer and eliminate all concerns and questions. We can agree that, you know, because my situation in federal courthouse, I'm about ready to start a trial tomorrow and I've struggled all day to make sure I can put in what plan I can to make everything as safe as I can.
Rick, you said on the face shields, I'll tell you, we, we got some.
Yeah, I was going to say, we've done ordered 100, so I've helped that. I mean, I, we're trying to ju, address some, but I don't know that there's ever a chance that we can eliminate all fears of that due at stake. I mean, is that correct?
I don't want anyone to think that I'm against school starting. And I think, I think we need to start. I just think that waiting three weeks to start can give us much, a better idea of what the health and the well-being of our communities will be. I've seen what these others can do in this path. If we have to start and we have to stop the second week of September, we may as well start. That's what I've heard. And Virginia is not starting students. They've already set the starting date for Virginia, but maybe not.
Or they can't get out of their house, Virginia, or something.
Thank you, thank you.
I would say something if we move on to that.
No, I'm going to let David do his own stuff, but you can go ahead.
Well, I think what she's saying about the, the shields, these face masks, I think that we need to purchase enough of those to where the teachers have got that, that qualified the teeth that they can use that if they want to. I think that we need to take a survey and see how many people want that. And then these air purifiers in the rooms. I think that we need to look at that too. Just, I know that in Tennessee, I know there's a lot of them, but if they were, then it would be good.
I don't know about the air purifiers, but I'll say this, we purchased 200 face shields, okay, 200. Uh, 500 teachers and, you know, we'll get more if people want more. We've got enough masks, blah, 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 we've got thousands of masks. We bought 24 electrical sprayers, okay? These are 24 of these. These things cost $525 a piece, okay? Those things will be utilized.
What does that do?
Okay, it's, it's spraying mist. This is called a Vax2 spray and this does kill, uh, human chromosomes, okay? That is what these four-hour custodians will be doing at night when they come in. They'll be utilizing these machines, spraying down classrooms, okay? Not only do we have 24 of those, we ordered 16 of these. These are pictures of them right here. They're cordless, right here. Those things cost $649 a piece. Now, we ordered those in March and we still don't have them in yet, okay? So basically the same thing, these have cords. So this will be a whole lot easier to use. Um, like I said, we've got 250 thermometers we've bought. We bought 168 of these, okay?
What are those?
Uh, thermometers, yes. And then we bought 82 of these thermometers.
And that's a total of how many?
Uh, a total of 250 thermometers. 1,000 to masks, 200 face shields, 24 electrical sprays and 16 battery sprayers. With this, I think, uh, a half ounce will do, you mix it with water, will do a gallon of water. And I'm not quite sure how many cases, George, you may know how many of these we have, but that's the plan for those.
The pallet?
Four hours.
A pallet?
There's been a lot of.
The pallet, I was about to talk today.
But a lot of things are still on back orders that we're trying to get, especially these here, which we bought those back in March, it's still.
Dave, she, she did bring up a good point about, so you know, I know we're doing that part of supply stuff too, but what about, I mean, are we good? Because I mean, like she said, you go to Walmart, you know, you can't hardly find wipes or just every so often, but what about, you know, like for teachers, do we have some spray stuff that they can?
I can't, I can't, but I know Angela's not here tonight, I'm not quite sure.
But you know, I mean, I thought sometime, maybe we have a solution, like have a spray bottle in there if they wanted to wipe it down some night, you know?
Do you not get on the door to back those spray bottles? We can't get a lot of those. We have some wipes. I think the plan may be to use spray. Yeah, I'm not quite sure on wipes, that's a question I have to ask for Ellen.
That's, that's the biggest thing and I think probably the reason schools and different places can still dissipate and in the hospital, because they use sprays and want to wipe down. We like to communicate to wipes and.
Well, basically this spray is not necessarily a wipe.
Yeah, you just go in.
You just, you just spray it on the surface and it's like a regular wipe.
Yeah, that's good.
I also think that, coming back around Dave, while we're on the cleaning, neither many asked for Clark or maybe Rob, I can't remember who made the mention about the extra janitors or something that we.
In the CARES Act, Chris is here, we did put in funds for every school to hire a four-hour custodian after school. So that way they're not driving a bus, they're just coming in and using these things and George's Red and the Right Act, those principles, that's what they're going to be used for. And their, their spraying down classrooms after school is their main job, is utilizing these machines and, and that's what they're doing, is going through the school spraying.
Thank you, Ash, or somebody asked about that.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, Clark made this a good point.
Well, Clark kind of mentioned this was going to hire, go get the.
How are we going to have them in place? If we don't have them in place, who's going to do it?
Well, based on the approval, your CARES Act, you've done a knife that gives us the dream life to go ahead like Doris said and we'll advertise, start advertising tomorrow.
Well, if we don't, then what?
Well, that'd be good, I'd have a Clark.
Well, I'm not, I'm not.
Right on that, you know, like we're looking around.
Well, I worry about that. But we don't have, once we start, I mean, that and Jason's trying to get, uh, we don't have the devices to serve the team. If we have to out, we don't, what would we have enough hotspots? I know Labor's going, uh, mentioning that he want to try to get some of those this week.
Clark, we do feel that we have enough devices when school starts for those kids signed up for the virtual program, okay? We still have a lot of new devices that are still on back order, especially in the K2 world, but as far as Jason's doing the best that he can.
Oh, I know.
To get, to get those kind of, and some are still on back order trying to.
Have them put small to drop.
Some have been recently ordered. It's, we get them off the pot.
Well, I tell you, boy, I'm sitting here, I appreciate everybody for what, what you have done. I mean, you're, you're trying, but we are in a situation that we've never been in and it's, uh, it's scary as hell. It just, uh, I'm not, I don't feel safe. I'm not going to Walmart, I think that, I mean, I, I.
I've been one time about 10, 11, 12.
We're not talking about Walmart, we're talking about schools. And that, schools are, the way it is, I mean, they're full of kids and big kids too are not, uh, I don't know how to say it, they, a lot of, uh, contact. And that's one thing that says, you know, that we shouldn't do is contact. And another thing is, I think everybody in school should wear a mask because the spraying and, and I know that's hard, my gosh, that's hard. I can hardly, I have to take this thing off up here.
I had a parent say this, her daughter, I guess eight years old now. She wore a mask. She has worn masks every day of her life. He says, if we train our kids to wear those masks, they'll wear them. That's, that's, and I know it rubbed somebody or some of us wrong to have to wear this damn thing, but you're right. But I'll wear it when I go in there. I don't wear it when I come in here. I feel safe in this place here. But I wouldn't wear it, I'll wear it if I'm going to school.
I think it's a good idea to wear it in certain places, Mark. I mean, you have certain places, but I will say, you know, wearing that mask right there, you're cutting your oxygen levels down to below where they need to be. I will say that. After about 20 seconds, not, not hours, but I'm talking just, just about 20 seconds, Clark. But I mean, that's fine. You won't.
It's fine, it's fine. It's worth it.
Well, yeah, you could, but, but if, but if you're talking about mandates and kids are trying to get kids to wear them, you can train them up where they think they want. Clark, you're going to do more devastating things to kids over a 10 or 15 period, 10 or 15 years, wearing that mask and what you will or not.
Well, I don't, I don't expect that.
Eventually we'll build up an immunity card or a vaccine or whatever for this and you won't have to.
Well, I agree with, because I agree.
Thank you.
But I don't, I don't expect part of this for the next 10 years or five years. I hope, I hope we've got something in place that, that will destroy the coronavirus.
Absolutely.
You know, the virus has long-term effects, just like the flu of 1917 and 1918 years. A child can have it and then, and they're older, as they age and they become old, they'll develop one disease, a CFV, and then probably other stuff that we're going to need to know about because there's a long-term effect from having this regardless of how old you are.
So Ray Langley, amend on this, the wording on your data photo as is right now?
I think the only thing I ask with those areas where you go from 100.4 to 100 and then the, uh, recommendation on the, uh, community spread and school operating scenarios to align with what the city has, has done that would align with their, their plan as well.
So you're asking to amend the plan to go from 104 to 1, is it 1?
100.4 to 100. That is on page 11, Appendix A, second bullet.
Okay.
And page 13, Appendix C, the fifth bullet point.
Okay. That's the two amendments. So anything else you'd like to discuss with Mr. Lang?
The only thing I want to say, and Lena is here, she helped draft this, this plan, uh, she's got. uh, she's kind of prescribed, uh, certainly, there's a lot of discussion and talk, meeting was a part of those meetings in reference, and a lot of discussion on masks. Uh, I will say this, what keeps me awake at night is this, um, you know, we ended the year at 6,100 kids. We've got roughly, probably right at 1,000 now that signed up for the online, because I did tell Lucy to start taking calls again once the, the ver, the plan came out of bricks and mortar, so we have taken a few out for that. Uh, what puts us, backs us in the corner is if you kind of don't work with parents, then they have the option of homeschool. And, and we all know this board had to make some very difficult decisions a year ago in reference to Glenwood West Fines. My biggest fear is when the ADM numbers come back in August, that, that were down a substantial amount of more kids. So, when we took the survey, and Chris can help me, about 1,800 guardians, um, the biggest majority, I would say 70 to 80 percent, did not want us requiring masks for kids. I'm just, I'm not here basing, being, telling my opinion, I'm just that one survey. So, I do feel that if we don't give some flexibility with parents, my biggest fear is boom, then they leave us, they go homeschool where they don't have to wear a mask. So, I'm just throwing that out for information that we gathered in reference to the survey, of where you're trying to balance safety as well as trying to hold on to schools and jobs for teachers.
What, what are you balancing? What percentage of 1,800 parents of the total persons, the total kids we had?
What, uh?
What was the percentage, is that 30%?
Uh, well, we have about 6,200, Clark, so that's what, 25, 30% of people that took the survey. So, we didn't get results on that, you're correct.
It's not a, it's not a majority. It's a, it's a minority, leading minority, 25, 20.
Yeah, but I would say it's an overwhelmingly majority in Green County, that, that don't wear masks, Clark. I mean, it's just, you know, I mean, I'm one of them, you know, I know Miss English back there, Mike C, and we look like we're in certain places or in closed quarters or something, I'll put one up, you know, but, you know, just down here working, and today most time outside, you know, coming in and out, you don't feel any...
I wouldn't expect you to, you know, in the person you're in.
But, but the majority of people, you know, in Green County, so, I mean, that survey matters, because you go out here and look, you, you, and even after the mayor, it's like what he said, I got the thing, what he sent out. But they won't, they won't, you know, that's not going to change many people's minds. They're just, you know, they're very not drawn on getting on it, it's, you know...
Clark, my information's just coming from those 1,800 that took the survey.
I know.
Yeah, I just read on WTRB, yeah, it is not mandated. Do you think else, Mr. McLean?
We could sit here for three days and not have this discussed.
Yeah, we can.
Do you think else, Mr. McLean?
That's got...
Any further questions or discussion from the board?
I'll make a motion that we start school the latter part of August, in the last week.
Now, say that when in office, when are you asking, the latter part of August?
The last week of August.
The last week of August.
Sorry, Mr.
You're talking about them, me and this Clark, is that what you're talking about them?
Well, we don't have, I guess...
We would have to amend the calendar.
That's, we'll amend the calendar a little bit.
So, you're asking to amend the calendar, is it start school August 24th is the last week, or August 30th?
24th, it'd be.
That's the last week in office?
Yeah.
That's the month, 24th?
Right, exactly, I don't care what's the issue.
Okay, um, so, we already, I don't guess we have any motion yet, so...
Yeah, we didn't even, like, like, so...
So, we can go ahead and, we can make that motion, yeah, we can make that motion.
So, he's not, he's not motioning?
We haven't even, we haven't gotten that, we haven't even made a motion yet.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Clark.
Mr. Justice, I just want to ask you this, what's that three weeks going to do?
That's going to give us an idea of these other systems to do go back to school. And then, and none of them start escalating.
We'll have a baseline from there.
That's right, we have an exposure of kids. And, and maybe have closed schools. And I think we'll do more damage if we have closed schools than waiting three weeks for two weeks, one.
I see, I see what you're saying. It's more of a baseline.
Yes.
Give us time to get a baseline from what's going on, county surrender.
And we, we definitely, the numbers are going up every day, with that.
The numbers are definitely on it. Mr. Justice, can I make a comment on your...
Yes, sir.
Let me get the motion, then we'll have discussion. So, I have a motion to, to extend the opening of schools to August the 24th. I have a second.
I have a second.
You got a motion by Clark Justice, second by Minnie, all right, discussion. All right, Mr. McLean?
Well, the only thing you need to think about here, and I'm not, I'm not going to sit here and put a dart at Clark, I respect his thought process, but one thing you need to think about is, is are you going to pay teachers during that three weeks? Are you going to pay classified staff? Kids are required to go to school.
I'm not asking to shorten the school year, about, I don't want the full 180 days, it may extend into June.
But don't you still have to have the 90 per semester?
You can have 90, we used to have a semester on the second week of January, when you went to school.
I, I would agree.
It don't have, it don't have to end in December.
And then I think Ms. Rhonda may get up and say something to this, so you're asking to extend the teachers' works into the summers?
No, I'm, I'm...
With that, Lee, Clark, with that thought.
They don't go, they don't go to work in the, the last day, so, they're down, you know.
Right, but I'm saying, no, they'll, they'll go first, I get that, but don't have to go into June working though, but they're making that down.
They're, they're going to run two months, they're going...
Right, but it goes into June, right? Yeah, that's where I'm coming from, the other end.
Why don't they go to the break, you guys, in June?
I'm sorry, Mark, you can shorten some of these weeks that we have off in October, December, April, and they won't like that either.
I was going to say, I've got some teacher friends, they, they're not going to like that either, so, you know, I...
But I'm, I'm just saying, we're not shortening the school, I'm not asking to do that.
Okay.
So, wouldn't you also be afraid that, let's say the city starts August the 7th, and we start August 24th, that those parents will say, I'm sending my kid to school, so I'll always send my kid to 6th?
I, I think you're right, I don't think, I don't think you're laughing at me, I think you're right, so. But I think if, if it's a lot safer...
Situation, like, we can afford losing kids, I mean...
We can afford losing themselves.
I, I, well, and we probably are not going to, sadly, to our own kids.
Well, I, I...
Kids.
What about the adults?
I, I told you, actually, actually, sex and marriage, I'm, I'm talking kids.
I am.
We're putting thousands of boys at risk.
Well, now, everybody is, because we're all working, we're all, we're all working, Clark, I mean, and if some people wasn't going anywhere, Clark, and they was hurting and staying at the house and not going anywhere, I could go along with that. But they're helping about, doing everything everybody else is doing, most of them, all of them, most of them. You get out and ride around Green County?
If we have a stop, if we have a stop in September, we may miss that.
Well, and they may do it in Florida.
Okay, so, let's say we start school regularly, August 7th, and then something happens in a couple of weeks, we have to shut down one school, like Miss Rebecca was talking about, one classroom, even the whole school suspends them for 14 days, but still not losing three weeks.
And we're all going to lose it, and we're starting.
Yeah, exactly. Look, I mean, I'm with you on that same part, too, you saying we're going to make a mistake, I don't understand, we're trying to, we're trying to base our decision on all the good, all the best information we can gather. I mean, I'm sitting here and listening to Ms. Rhonda, and I'm, I'm listening to Ms. Rebecca, I mean, Kathy's a good friend, I'm, I'm sure Kathy had concern, she called Rick up and tell us.
Whatever decision we make, I'll support.
Yeah, no, I'm with you, I'm with you, I mean, I think we're all just trying to wrap our heads on this, but I don't, I hate for you to say I'm going to make a mistake if I vote one way, but God, you know, I'm just trying to do the best.
I understand that, but I, I don't want nobody's life on my...
Look, you keep saying, but I, I don't either. I think the whole board does. I think everybody in this room doesn't want to put anybody at risk. I think that...
But we can't wipe it all...
You know, I'll put it this way, people blow up federal warehouses and issue federal people. I go to a federal building every day, I put my life at risk every day, I know that. Everybody does. They complain this on Bush Hall, they, the miners get on Bush Hall, they put this life at risk. We just have to try, it's like Rebecca or somebody said, we have to make the best decisions to take care of ourselves, that's wearing a mask and sanitizer, I'm going to shut up leading the way.
One thing to consider when you talk about the shifting of, of opening or, or the shifting of the semesters, we have high schools that operate on a block system, and for courses that operate on a block system, there's a window when that, that end of course test has to be done, and it's before the Christmas break. That's a state window. So, while we're in the block system, at one time, I know that the semester may be extended beyond January, but under the block system with a course that runs one semester, it has to finish the one Christmas break, so that they can take that in the course test.
So, it has to do this.
Mr. Depp, I'll say one more thing, guys, we are once again in uncharted territory. Any plan, whether it's this plan, or whether it's a virtual plan, it's not going to be perfect. This year, and we talk among directors of schools, we meet every Wednesday morning, we're a lot of them here, we're trying to learn. This hasn't happened since 1917, 1918, uh, World War II in the 40s. This has never happened, we're, we're doing the best we can to educate kids.
And that, it ain't just local system, it's all of us.
No plan is going to be perfect, and I just want to say that, because people are going to say, it, it can be critique, it can be judge, it's opinion, everybody has an opinion, no matter what teacher in, either you're a board member, taxpayer, a parent, grandparent, the principal, teacher, everybody has an opinion, but it's not going to be perfect, and I just want, I just want people to know that, and, and we're trying to do the best we can, I promise you.
They are assessing, but we're in the state, not, you said, they're waiting, waiting to start school, am I correct?
Yeah, I did talk with Julie Langens about that today, there's some in metro and actual area, I believe, that are, that are delaying their start of school, but no one in upper, in this region and up there.
And Hamilton County and North County hasn't delayed. I do, because I work with you, of course, I did reach out and check that, um, you know, I...
Mr. Justice, it's not really just a hard to, respect your opinions and your ideas. I just want to say that, that's, and your opinion's a little harder than the rest of us, was leaving, losing their necks today, and I'm sure we'd be feeling a little stronger if we left, lost one of our family members, I hope, and my head's off, you see.
Any other discussion on the extending, delaying the start? All right, a motion then, delaying start of schools August 24th, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, like, no. No. Okay. Now, up is to vote on the plan amended, as amended by Mr. McLean to change 104 to 100, and to add levels, I guess, to our community spread and school operating scenarios. Any further discussion on the plan? Just so I can, I mean, we, we come up with numbers, but those are just, those are trigger numbers, right? Those are, those are numbers that you hit and say, okay, we got to evaluate this, we got to bring in, uh, health department, it's not an automatic move.
I think it's a great statement you made there, Brian, it's a trigger number. It's a trigger number, when we get to that number, that's when I'm, uh, getting with the health department, we're going to sit down and see, see where those, where that statement place at, and go from there.
Okay. And we're going to be working in and out of the state, the health department, vote with health department.
And probably the city system as well.
And, and that's another thing, too, I want to say, the, the city and the county are trying to work together on ours, so we can be...
Rick, do you care if I make a statement? I know people are ready to go, but I'm going to make one more statement.
Listen, we're not, we'll be here as long as you have your business.
You know, I did hear Rhonda bring up a question, we did talk some about the hybrid plan, I think, uh, I think the city is going maybe Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, if they get to the yellow. We, but I know in defense of us, I'm not sure up front they were even considering or looking at virtual plans as an option. I think maybe they are now. So, we were looking at either virtual, bricks and mortar, but we also want to put ourselves in the shoes of parents. I'll say this, that's a tough schedule for parents, when you're just going Monday, Wednesday, Tuesday, and Thursday, because of trying to find daycare.
Yeah.
And so, that was really why, I, I don't want teachers to think we didn't respect them, I, I get that, but also, I, I think that's, that's a pretty tough situation. And plus, we still have the option of virtual, you know? So, we did have two options, much like the city did, but I think maybe they're pulling some things out there and surveying out with virtual, or maybe they weren't doing that up front, they were just looking at complete bricks and mortar and hybrid, or now I think they're, they really don't have a choice. Yes, Clark?
Well, we, in our instruction in the classroom, the same picture, if you want, we teach you basically virtual, with the exception of the group with, you know, 100 seats or so.
Yeah, and I'll say this, we do have, you know, I sent out an email, and I think many of you all have seen it, board members, to teachers, if you have specific, um, health concerns, uh, you need to contact your supervisor, principal, or Tammy Duncan in here, then we will work with those people, and then we want to utilize those virtually, and that's going to be in this plan. But to answer your question, Clark, yes...
We'll see, instructing the kids in the room as if they were conducting the class online, virtual class, because if we had to go to virtual, then everybody would be used to the same times, like, right?
Yeah, yeah, Clark, Bill said that's first, part of the first league back, so we want those same kids in that class, we have to shut down, let's use my son, Bennett, as an example, he, he's an oil cream mill school, and he has to get tested and leave and quarantine for 10, 14 days, and that teacher knows exactly who he is, and he can pick up his device and go. That's, that's kind of where we wanted to get to, whether we're in school, bricks and mortar, virtual, or we have to shut that school down and, and complete the whole, you know, shut the whole school down. But, Clark, I'm not going to disagree with your statement. A big concern there for us in this plan, in this virtual plan, is if you do have a lot of teachers, uh, contract that or get that, and, and we're down 15 to 20 teachers in that school, then that's going to be tough.
And the system will be tough, even.
Stuff.
So, as a parent, is this plan, even though we vote on this tonight, is the school system flexible enough to where, hey, I want to send my kid to school, but then once she starts, she, I say, no, I don't feel comfortable, let me do virtual for a couple of weeks, now she's ready?
Okay, and so, a lot of talk among other districts is you either do it in the K-8 world at the, at the nine weeks, or high school, you just do it a semester. This office is kicked around, you get one move. So, maybe you do virtual for two weeks, and you're like, oh, I don't like it, we don't want to hurt the kid, oh, wait the nine weeks before they can make the move. So, a lot of districts are doing one move in that year, you get one move. So, if you start out bricks and mortar, and you want to go virtual, then you got one move. And when the virtual plan comes up, you'll see some specific things like high school athletics, can it take city equalizes, those kind of things. But right now, within our discussion, you give those kids one move, you get one move. I mean, I don't think we can have four, five moves, and then move back and forth, but I think the only way is to do one.
Yeah, that's two moves, right? Which, you make that move and discover that end, what we need to do then, like, if you move and break the road...
Like, you start school, then move back to virtual, and if they know what they have to do.
You may decide that we made a mistake, we need to be in school, but I think they all have an opportunity, a second, a second move, no more.
No, no. I mean, that can be discussed among the staff here, Clark.
And we're still going to be doing it...
And we're still going to be doing a virtual plan also. This is just a written one.
Yeah, that's, that basically is what we're getting recommended from T S B A that this board needs to vote on. Virtual plan is one that we'll put together here and then we'll, it's kind of in-house, we'll run with and utilize that virtual one.
Any further questions to anyone for discussion?
So do you need a motion with those amendments?
Ah, yeah, yeah, I guess we better.
Marianne?
No, you didn't. Thank you. Now, I need a motion to approve framework for return to school document with amended, 100.4 to 100, and then the criteria and the numbers or whatever one says, trigger numbers on page, help me, Dave.
Not sure the page, it's the community spread and school.
I did say that. Trigger numbers on the community spread and school operating scenarios. I have a motion.
So moving.
Brian, I have a second. I'm going to ask this, so somebody will think I didn't say, but I'm going, I could always do any further discussion. All in favor of amended plan and after all discussion with everybody here today. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, fine. There you have it. Now, the next announcement, I want to thank everyone for all their hard work and for everybody that took time out to be here with us tonight to discuss this. This is very important. You can tell all board members are very concerned and it's not an easy vote. It caused a lot of hard discussions, but it's been a lot of, and thank you for doing that. Especially I want to thank Rebecca and Kathy for coming and sticking in here with us. Any other announcements? I just asked that, one, we need to keep Clark, get some in our prayers for his death, and also guys, just pray for everybody in our community and our schools and all the work factory work on. We just got to keep everybody in our prayers and be thankful and think about each other. Our next meeting, unless we have a call meeting, will be Thursday, August the 27th at 5:30 here at Central Office. Y'all have a good night.